Let's stand for prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we gather today to start talking about the American Rescue Plan funds, and it's a new subject for all of us. We just pray for guidance and direction, and we are thankful for what Trailer and Associates brings to help us through this process and for what Barbara in the Auditor's Office do, just use this money, Lord, in whatever way that you direct us for the betterment of our community and our taxpayers. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we may need a couple of extra chairs down there, but let's get enough for the five of us, six, seven. You gonna sit on this or just turn on the recorder?
Is this a continuation of your discussion?
No. No, it's a whole new meeting. But we do have the off video running.
Oh, wait a minute. Maybe Apple Watch pacemaker went out or something wrong. There you go. Your pacemaker okay? Pacemaker okay?
Your pacemaker went off.
Did you phone just went off like a...
The actual activation went off.
Don't make the pacemaker go off or something.
It went down.
Get the defibrillator out.
You can put time.
You haven't checked the air if it started.
Start it up.
It was cool when I walked in the door, but it's down here. It's murmuring ahead up there, or on this end anyway. Because it bounces off every wall, it could go right down here.
Okay, well, I hope that everyone has met Mark. So, Mark is five members of Commissioner Thor and our auditor. We got Mark in at the back. That's his interest here. I've got a feeling that Mark has got a bunch of questions, so I think I might spark a lead. Let Barbara ask quickly. She knows her job right now before we begin the discussion. I know I'd like to spend some time just letting you talk about this process and what you learned about it thus far, to tell you where we are in the process. We're not ready to give you a list and say, here's how we're going to spend the money. We talked about some ideas, but really not a full long list of ideas. And so, you'll be able to formulate some thinking, I feel like, on our part as to what some of the options we may not have thought about for how to spend this money. We talked about expanding the wood print for fiber optics. We talked through that presentation from the Hockville Administrator at for about about an hour or two to assess some of his expenses during COVID. I personally would like to see us give a little bit of money to our railroad district. We got capacity to track the bear. That's not even something I care. That's about it. We might give a lot of other things to bring about, but Barbara, you don't have a big hand or do you have the march?
I have some additional things that I thought about, just like the railroad. I don't know if it's a requirement. That's why we need to review. One of the things that comes to my mind is we have a agreement with the city of Mount West with the Department of Customs and Health. That's renegotiating every some period of time, and we're going to do that again. It's very simple, but very important. So, I don't know if that would meet the requirements for these funds, but that if it did, that would be helpful to the entire county. And then the other thing, I'm just looking at the possibility of laptops just for the people. Now, I say just for the people in the office. I'm only saying that because we didn't payroll and accounts payment. In the event, we had something else like COVID, we managed not to shut down because we purchased an air purifier. We got given names. We have two people who are not vaccinated, one who's vaccinated and has had COVID, and two people who are vaccinated. But in the event, we had shut down. I don't think we would offer county employees to go and get paid. I think that is truly a critical requirement as well as, you know, just keeping the jail running, keeping the bills paid for those kinds of things. So, if it meets the requirements, I think we need to get laptops, put them in possibly work from home or from the public library in a separate room, whatever, you know, something like that. I don't want to say just for my office. I'm going to consider phones. There are probably other things, other departments that might be something like that as well. We also identified a security, cybersecurity debt. I've been back and forth with him. We talked about this last time. It's about $37,000. It's a server, but it's like a redundant server, so that it's protected. If you need the first one to stay, it's maybe. See, I don't have the technology in the jargon hardly, but he's worked that out for me. I don't know if that meets the requirements. And then possibly the air purifiers in my office that we got, I purchased those through the CoronaFire brand. I selected those because I was thinking my business had one every room in this office, and I didn't know what else. I mean, to protect up my people, because when you see my office, you'll see that it's small and you're kind of on top of each other. It's not six foot tall. So, if we can, I don't know if we need to get those. I don't know how y'all feel. Y'all outside more than some. You know, Jake's office is maybe. I don't know what the best pieces of this money. I don't want to take it out, but I'm just trying to think about other things that might meet those requirements. I think these ones, I mean, if you can do road materials, something we already know about, those are going in the city of Marytown, as well as fuel, county line. And like I said, I don't know what we're paying the money on, but those are things that I know are coming. You know, it's really all, I hate saying relation to COVID, COVID caused some of this inflation that we're now having to deal with and all that. So, with that being said.
Let me give y'all a quick pony show, and then we'll build from there on it. If you would, real quickly, first of all, I'd like to express our appreciation. I've been curious about the county for the Assistant Administration of this grant. I don't know if y'all are familiar with Trailer and Associates or not. Our primary office is out of Tyler. We work on the state of Texas. Barbara and I were discussing some of the clients we have, the deal from the coast, far west Texas to the northern part of Texas. They come everywhere in the plane. And we're 48 plus years in doing this. Oldest grant firm in the state of Texas that does this type of work. Mr. Trailer is still active in the company. He grew up in Gilmore, got out of high school, went to college, wound up settling in Tyler, and took a three-month stint helping the gentleman out that owned the company. And five years later, he wound up owning the company, and he's lived in it three months and still stretching out. So, that's all. It was then when I ran at Associates. I don't know if you're familiar with Ranin and Associates, the engineering firm. Of course, that was way before I went to work from. I've been working with them over 20 years now.
He bought out, didn't he?
Yeah.
Isn't he a seller back there? It existed prior.
He took the company over in 2004. So, he's been at it a while to say. Let me just, we'll kind of go through this. I'm not real big on dragging stuff out, so we'll go through this quick presentation, get the high spots, and I think it'll answer some basic questions y'all have, and then we'll go from there. Stay as long as y'all want to and answer as many questions as y'all have. Once again, your allocation on this, 6.3 million, a little bit of cash. The first half of this, you've already received. The second half, you received any kind of correspondence?
No. Now, so my question's for you, for y'all, Bill, how do we make, I think it may come to Judge Lee, because he had to do the original, you know, sign it.
I did get signed it in the email, get it, okay. My guy goes, oh, my board, it's you. I don't remember. So, you want to give, I don't know if you can see it. Your country might.
Typically, you know, when you initially submit it for this money, you have to submit a form. This part, there is one additional form that you need to do in signing. Basically, you send the I've been for the second. They are anticipating the second half of the funds coming out somewhere in July or August of this year. So, y'all should have that full amount here pretty soon. All right, as far as expenditure categories on page two, all expenditures have to fall within one of these four main categories: public health and economic impacts, premium pay, investments in infrastructure, or revenue loss. And we'll go into each of these in a little bit more detail. We're not going to get real heavy on the first three, but we'll talk about them a little bit. Public health and economic impact, basically, you're looking at anything that you can tie directly back to COVID, whether that be healthcare, assistance with that, whether it be industry, individuals, homeowners, small businesses that were affected by COVID. Those type of things would fall in that category. As far as premium pay, you'll see on the next page there, those individuals that there again were very close to COVID, were providing a service where they were either in the health field or the top service they provided, put them in close contact with people that were potentially infected by COVID. Premium pay, you can go back and give them an additional up to $13 per hour for a maximum of $25,000 COVID. There again, that is looking at primarily the lower than people burning and going up from there, whether that be county employees or whether that be some industries that outside the county and such as government entity itself requesting those funds. You can do that. Investment in infrastructure, there are four main things as far as infrastructure they're looking at here. Drinking water, sewer, stormwater, and broadband. Once again, keep that in mind. If you're looking at infrastructure in this box, those are the things that you're looking at. As it relates to stormwater, it does have to be an activity that could have been funded through the Clean Water Act. Does the same thing with water programs, the Fair Water State involving. So, it has to be an activity that can be funded through that. Broadband is getting to be a big thing with everybody, but they're pushing the broadband now to try to assist the broadband service. There's a lot of different funding channels out there currently. There's a lot of interesting things going in. A lot of people are really pushing the broadband service. I don't know if y'all are familiar with the ARDOF program, or you want to give a presentation to the county on that. That is a federal program where the feds have come in and offered to subsidize broadband providers for going into rural areas and providing rural broadband service. That is throughout the United States, and they give a subsidy based on each connection that they look up, and they subsidize that service for a continued year to try to encourage that provider to get out and reach farther out into the rural areas and provide that service and offset some of their expenses. It's ARDOF Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, I believe if I'm not mistaken, and I can get y'all some more information on that as well.
Is that a separate grant?
That's a separate grant. Now, that is provided to broadband providers themselves.
Okay.
That would not be available to the county, but that is provided to the providers to encourage them to reach out and point to the rural areas. Much as the country saw in the 30s, 40s would provide electrical service without subsidizing that, where the companies can't just borrow from that, they would like to service out to the rural areas and get that out to local companies.
Do we need to ask them about that, whoever we're talking to, the company, we got their experience with broadband?
Yeah. I would definitely recommend to get up to them, see what they've done in regard to that. If I can get it, yeah, they should all be aware of that, and I can get it in the system and get y'all some additional information as far as the areas here within Titus County that the feds are offering those funds.
I had a, I had a engineering firm call me two weeks ago, I guess it was, about an area out here in my precinct, out here in southwest, southeast part of the county, that, and they were asking about what we would require and if they could. Some of it's going to be underground. Most of it, yes, I know, has already approved them using their power line poles and whatnot. And I told the guy, I said, send me a map and let me look at where everything's going. And I called him back and talked to him, and I said, I don't see any problem with it. And he was working for some other company that was, I mean, they were doing all the footwork and all for that. And I told him, it wasn't a big area that they were doing, but it was, it's where the service is real bad right now. So.
And broadband, I think, you know, it costs considerable to get it out there and get to those areas, and that's why the rural areas are served. The population's not large enough for them to justify the expense to get it out there. The microwave broadband, that's something that's come a long way since the last few years. That's what I have in my house. Prior to that, I've got satellite internet, which we're awful.
Well, that's what most of us have got out in this area now, out there, around here and all that there. And I asked him, my question, another one of my questions to him was, what will it be? Is this, you know, he said it'll be the same fiber optics that Dallas and Houston's got. And I said, well, I don't see any problem with it.
There's a lot to look at on broadband. Once again, you need to know what the coverage area currently is here within the county, who has a good broadband signal, who has a weak signal. We don't have a signal at all, basically. And there again, we can get you a map of the ARDOF areas that show where they're willing to subsidize. And it could be that some of these providers have already come in and acquired or subsidized, and they're working right now. But there again, we can get y'all maps on that.
I'd like to see that.
Take a look at that. One of the things to consider with that is a lot of times, you've got a lot of top providers, and it's something that Commissioner Thor has to weigh. You know, we want to take these funds and provide it to an individual providing service rather than providing it in an area where the entire county needs to pay that bill. And there again, a part of it goes back to how much coverage do you have, how big of an area do you have left that you're looking at?
How are some of these citizens out here talking about, where we're using it to build a new jail or build a new?
More now. Those, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Those are, those are pretty much frowned on by the legislature.
Pretty much frowned on.
Matter of fact, they, actually, it is. Now, as far as infrastructure, no, it's not one of the infrastructure items that you can consider. Other infrastructure as such. What they look at it as is going back to the lost revenue or that fourth box that the money is going to.
We were going to build a jail, and we had lost revenue. Now, if we had that revenue, we were going to build a new jail.
And there again, it's one of those deals, they have not came out and blanketly said, no, you can't do it. They have came out and said that they discourage it. And there again, what Treasury is going to do, maybe it's going to come back and haunt them later. And that's my concern. You know, Treasury, this is a new game for everybody. We have no doubt the Treasury is not going to be coming out auditing. As much funds as there are, as far as it has been distributed, the way I look at it, kind of like the higher end, they can't audit everybody. They're going to come back and ask for some files. They're going to ask for some documentation. You need to have your ducks in a row as well as you possibly can, and you need to try to, try to dot the i's and cross all the k's as best you can. And in some situations, you're going to get into kind of some shaky ground. If it's areas that y'all want to have an interest in going, then I would say let us try to send that up to Treasury and see if they would give us something.
Not the Granger's jail, like, or the feds are having to build a little house or a jail or something. Here's what we've got to talk about that number one. I don't see this. What is the potential reparation? Is there just so many incentives and so much money that you can basically do whatever you want? No money can catch you.
No, and there is a risk of clawback. But we don't, and there again, that's what we're here to help you with. Now, you know, as a red administrator working for y'all, we're going to tell you what you definitely can't do with these funds, we're going to tell you what you can do with these funds, and we're going to tell you where the shaky ground is. We're not going to tell you that you have to spend the money this way. That's y'all's determination. But if it is shaky ground, we're going to let you know that we feel shaky ground, and if you were to be honest, it could be questionable. But, you know, we're not coming up here to do, hey, you're saying this is the way it's going to be. This is y'all's determination.
Like with those, that was Barbara, you know, putting air filters, equal data, COVID-related, that's pretty clear, but, you know, fire protection, that one, or I don't know how that could possibly fall into this. I don't know if you can say, well, we lost revenue, well, we're under contract, we're experiencing, like, 100% we need to get more. And we have that, and we're not getting ready to see that amount increase because of COVID.
As far as the rules as it relates to the ARCA funds and the receipt of ARCA funds from a municipality or a county, I don't know if y'all are familiar with what they refer to the interim final rule, just like the Roxy Law and the Bay, is a final or not. And then they did come out with the final rule, which was effective in a final 437 acres. And it's, it's a lot too, and it's another one of those situations where you relook at here and it refers you back to the front, and it refers you back to three pages beyond the start of it, and a lot of back and forth to it. But as it relates to air purification, that is one of the items that they specifically speak of, and they specifically encourage the use of these funds for.
I'm interested in all this emphasis on water, on water, water, that has to be a point.
Well, and there again, it's kind of, you know, how far do you want to run with that string, and how far can you chase it? It's one of those deals where a lot of people were working from home, a lot of people, even in rural areas, did not have access to, say, pot of water. And so, they're like, they're going to be at home, they need water to drink, they need sewer, they need situations where, and as far as the drainage and so forth, they need situations where they can get it announced. And that's kind of how I look at that. All right, so let's talk about lost revenue a little bit here. All right. So, initially, the interim final rule, what they came out with, and it remains, you can claim or capture lost revenue in four years, 2020, 2021, '22, and 2023. That is measured against revenue that was received prior to the COVID epidemic. And then they put a little factor in there for a growth factor. In the final rule that came out, they came out similar, once again, going back to income tax, and if you take a standard deduction, you're in the tax. If you take a standard deduction, you don't have to document where that money went, anything else for it. You're saying, I'm taking a standard deduction. The Treasury came back and said, all right, there's a lot of people that are interested in lost revenue, a lot of people facing lost revenue, a lot of people trying to do this calculation to support cost revenue, that we realize is a pain. We're going to give you a standard deduction of $2, $10 million. You don't have to document it, you don't have to support it, you just have to let us know that if you want to take the standard deduction, how much of your allocation do you want to put it on? You can put every bit of it up to $10 million if you're assuming $10 million. They're not going to increase your allocation, but anybody and everybody has the ability to claim up to $10 million if you're so.
But that doesn't mean that since we're below $10 million, we expend it anyway.
Not anyway, no. And so, let's kind of talk about that in our next box here. All right. So, once again, this is the most flexible use of revenue funds. It includes services traditionally provided by a federal entity. Eligible uses of the funds include debt service, settlements or judgments, financial reserves or rainy day funds, undermining practices for stopping the spread of COVID. And I want you to take that money and go opposite direction than what you're going. That would be things like, if people were to be fined, and I'm not going to get the whole mask bill, but if people were fined for not wearing masks at one point in time, and the county said, don't worry about it, we'll cover that fine with our funds. That's circumventing if we're going to oppose to the COVID requirements. Also violating federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Now, that's a big one. There again, that's another where we come into play and get all out at. Procurement is a big thing as it relates to federal funds. You got to make sure you have all your i's dotted, all your t's crossed. That's something that Barbara and I are working on, taking a look at as far as the county's procurement procedures. Are they at the standard with what the feds require? What the fed state is, you're going to get to use our procedures, state procedures, or your local procedures, whichever was stretching. So, we kind of have to take a look at all of those. All right, so now we get down to the last bullet over here on revenue loss. It is generally ineligible activities. Includes correctional facilities, congregant facilities, convention centers, or stadiums. And that's there.
Generally ineligible.
Generally ineligible. And there again, that's kind of a gray area if you wanted to go in that direction with any of it. I would say let's reach out to the Treasury before we go there, but that is directly.
That has to come up in our discussion. We've got a lot more to do. We're in a nice position where we don't need to spend an amount of infrastructure like y'all jail. I don't like that we can increase for how, but I think we better spend that money at this point in time on other things.
Okay. Well, we've basically just got one more slide here. So, let's go through it, and then we'll kind of back up a little bit. All right, so the timeline for the funds. Once again, you should be getting your second tranche, which before all this started with COVID, I didn't have a tranche.
Look at that.
All right, so costs must have been incurred.
Like, we can increase courthouse, but I think we better spend that money at this point in time on other things for the board.
Okay. Well, we've basically just got one more slide here. So let's go through it, and then we'll kinda back up a little bit. Alright, so the timeline for the funds. Once again, you should be getting your second tranche, which before all this started with COVID, I didn't have a tranche. Alright, so costs must have been incurred. Owner after March the 3rd, 2021, they have to be obligated. In other words, you have to have said, this is where this money's going. We've got a spot for every dollar we're getting. By December the 31st, 2024. And it must be expended by December 31st, 2026. There again, the second tranche of money, you do not have to have obligated or spent the first 50% in order to receive the, the second half. Alright, so back up a page. I told you what they said is ineligible use of revenue loss. And I told you what is generally ineligible. So what is eligible? Anything else that a county go typically spend dollars on, if it's eligible spending term, under revenue.
Is an eligible, not ineligible, is eligible.
Is eligible. So you've got the old helmet there. You've got computers are eligible, air filtration is eligible, assistant fire department's eligible. If you wanna buy a power truck, that's eligible. If you want to buy new cars for the sheriff's department. If you wanna go buy a new maintainer, if you wanna buy road oil with it, all those activities. If you want to pay roll with it. If you wanna come in and put a new filtration system in the courthouse, or any other county building. Anything you would typically spend your dollars on are still eligible activities. And beyond that, it's not just what you would typically do. But what they reference in the final rule is what a government entity would typically do. So it could be something that y'all have not historically spent dollars on, that is not uncommon for a county to spend tax dollars for. It's an eligible activity. The main thing we have to look at once again, of course, there's a lot of rules and regulations that come into it. Procurement, once again, is, is one of those biggies. That's gonna be dependent upon the dollar amount of the activity. That's gonna determine the route that has to be gone in procurement service. One of the things that we run into with counties, and one thing a lot of counties are not even aware of. If it comes to road work, if it comes to reconstructing a county road. The state statute, there's an exemption for county commissioners. If you go in and you redo your roads using your manpower, you do not have to have that project designed by an engineer. That's the one exemption in the state statutes. Once again, feds say we have to go with local, state, or federal, whichever's most stringent. If you have a road project that you're bidding out. That road project has a total cost of more than $20,000. State statute says that project has to be designed by an engineer. If you're doing a generator project, or if you're doing any other type of electrical project that exceeds $8,000. State statute says that has to be designed by an engineer. Couple of reasons for that. One, engineers have the money to hire some good lobbyists. The rhetoric has been out there for many, many years. Two.
That's similar with y'all.
Two, you're dealing with taxpayer dollars. They don't want you to take those taxpayer dollars. Spend them on an activity that you turn around and turns out to waste a lot. Either the project is effective in whatever manner. If you put a generator in somewhere, they want that generator spec'd out. They want it large enough to serve the purposes for without being overshadowed. Same thing with, say, a bridge project. You're gonna go in and redo a bridge. If you're contracting it out to a third party. They wanna make sure that the bridge is designed to where it's gonna hold up and stand for many years to come. And then you get all kinds of stuff taken with that. As far as Davis Bacon, y'all are familiar with Davis Bacon. That basically goes back to the wage rate. And that says that anybody who have on a job, construction job, must be paid according to wage. For the type of activity they're performing and the trade they're performing. Has to be monitored. You have to ensure they're being paid that. You have to look at weekly payrolls, ensure they're being paid time to have. ARCA says you don't have to use Davis Bacon. You can use the equivalent of that, but you have to document how you came up with all those numbers. So we encourage folks, Davis Bacon's already there, they've already got the numbers out based on a county by county basis. Let's go with their numbers, and we will monitor those numbers. We'll look at weekly payrolls if you contract anything out, and we'll ensure that stuff. And I know I'm doing a lot of running back and forth, but this is just to kinda give you a general overview. Going back to the air purifiers that you would purchase, goes back to the dollar amount of those. Determines how you go out and care of that. And there again, looking one that we tell on the dollar amount. One of the most lenient ways of doing it, it's referred to as the small purchase procurement. Where you have to reach out, you have to contract, contact those three providers of what you're looking for. So this is what I'm looking for. What's your price? What's your time for this day to come? It's part of something to get it. And then you have to basically utilize and purchasing that particular item based on the information you have documented. Goes up from there. You're looking at any project that's over $50,000 to the state of Texas. Then that's a project that must be bid out. And once again, what the project is kinda determines exactly how to bid, how you go with it from that point forward. But if it's more than 50,000, once again, fed will say 250, but state of Texas says 50. Alright guys, I threw a lot out there. Let's, let's go through some questions, and I'll, and I'll throw some more out there.
Road equipment would be a pretty easy one. Dump trucks, backhoe, something like that. And then for a road project, since we do it ourselves, because of materials, like the old road oil and the gravel, chip sealing.
Now, the materials, does the county go out and procure that on an annual basis?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But I'm not sure that we meet all the requirements that we need to, for these things.
So we would have to go back, get all those documents.
We're about to do that again. I mean, I'm about to start on it right away, so if we could do that for these.
Yeah, we just, you can go ahead and, and look at that. If anything needs to be bumped up on that, make sure it's, it's up to par.
I'll just send those to you, can't wait to get them back.
Yeah. And, and with that being said, anything like that you have previously procured, we go back, we look at those documents. We try to make sure that it is compliant with local, state, and federal procurement requirements. And if it is, we've got all the documentation, we're good to go with it. If it's not, then we have to let it go.
So if a Winfield city municipality comes to us and says, we need 250,000 for some sewer upgrades. Could y'all help us? Then that would be engineered, since it's over 50,000, and it'd be a lot of paperwork nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, speaking of nightmare, I mean, that's, that's what we're here for.
Mm-hmm.
It would have, you would have to procure that engineering. And the process you have to go through to get that.
Be on us, and they'd be scot-free.
They're gonna tell, I'm asking you, my understanding is that you're gonna send us whatever the RFQ needs to be, tells you to put it in newspaper. Didn't those things come back?
No, we didn't.
Did you got problems with that?
No, we didn't. We'll, we'll provide, we'll provide you with RFQ.
Barbara nearly fell out of her chair when you said that.
You got like 14 more to do though.
So, and once again, without worrying too much on it, say, as an engineer, you've gotta run it in the paper. Seven days later, you've gotta run it in the paper again. The qualifications that you're requesting, there has to be at least 14 days from the date you initially publicize that, till you get it back. You've gotta personally send that out, at least five engineers are involved. You have to have the criteria established that's gonna determine how you're gonna select that engineer prior to sending that request out.
Be a big commitment on us, and a whole lot more expense for the whole total job to get done. Simpler's better.
But that's gonna be the case for everything that we've heard, for anything over 50,000 dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and that's why, y'all remember, I told you that the pages are, are volumes, 437 in the final rule. But the purchasing requirements are the ones that I was the most concerned about, and I'm pleased to hear you talk about those things.
Well, and that's 437 pages references where you go to the code of federal regulations to get the purchase requirements. They're not part of the 437. That's another stack there.
One item might be those grass trucks we buy every year. Vehicles for the sheriff's department. And then the tanker we buy every five or six years for the city. It'll be due in about three more years, maybe. Have to buy another one. We could buy it before this date goes out. This time, had to be purchased in '25, maybe, 2025. Had to know by the end of '24.
They probably accepted it earlier.
Yeah, and that'd be bid out and everything. I mean, it might be an expense we could use that money for. It's gonna, we're gonna have to get one anyway sooner. The next one, I don't know when they'll need it though.
Seems like a lot of money, but when you start figuring out.
Yeah, to go quick.
What your needs are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you go quick. Now, what we will do, and I apologize, I shouldn't have brought up that today. We've got a little one-page request form. We encourage that to be used whether it's inside the county. Or whether y'all are gonna solicit input from folks outside the county directly. Consider funding some projects. And I won't say outside the county, I'm talking about the county government. If you're gonna, say, take applications, water supply corporations, large, general. One county we're working with, they said, you know, everyone's storm pit is hard. We have thousands of people without water for days. One of the things we wanna do with this money is provide generators for water supplies. We don't wanna provide it to individuals for their homes, which you could, if this happens. We don't wanna provide it to profit water supplies. We wanna provide it to the water supply corporations that they're dealing with. And that's the way we're structuring a portion of their costs.
Is travel work a big problem? I mean, because he, I think it was.
Now, federal regs doesn't say it has to be a non-profit. The county, the county made that recommendation. Alright, so let's talk about qualified census tracts for just a minute. That is the area in purple. Basic definition of a qualified census tract is based on census documentation. Census Bureau has determined that these areas in purple, at least 60% of the residents make less than 50% of the median income. In other words, those are some relatively low, relatively low-income areas. If you go back, if you read through the final rule, the final rule talks a lot about qualified census tracts. It doesn't say your money has to be spent in qualified census tracts. Basically, what they lead to, if you read between the lines, is if you're gonna spend money in the areas outside the census tracts that are purple, and don't spend any inside, you need to give us just good justification why you don't do it. Because these are the folks that the federal government has determined, based on income, is the most needed, most advantaged within this county. Now, there again, that's not to say that the projects have to be within those areas. But as an example, if you're looking at road projects, I would highly discourage doing road projects all the way around that area and not doing anything inside of there.
I don't have anything in purple.
Wow. About half of mine's in it.
I know, yeah, yeah.
And a big dividing line, like 10-30 divides it, precinct one and two.
What you get for having a lake, no, not there.
I'm on the wrong side of the road on this slide. Jeff's on the right side of the road. On the wrong side of the road, we share the road.
As far as assistance to individuals, to homeowners support, there again, the book's pretty much open. There's nothing that says you have to do that. What the federal rules does say is if you do do it, we've already pre-qualified these folks within this area. If you wanna do anything that assists them as a whole, once again, going back to COVID situation that might have been incurred during that. If you wanna do anything that's related to daycare facilities, if you wanna help support a daycare for the folks that live in those areas. If you wanna help support the roads in those areas, the houses in those areas, rental income in those areas. They're saying, we've already pre-qualified these areas. If you're gonna provide that service outside of these areas, then let's take a look at how you're gonna qualify some of safer road assistance.
Wow, cut me out of that. Maybe for some broadband maybe out there.
And there again, using broadband as an example. They'll pick out four or five areas outside of that, if the need is just as great inside that area. And not provide service and not have justification why you're not serving.
That's where that mouth that you was talking about would help with that.
Yeah, if, if we have documentation that says this area has good service, then you've got your justification for not providing that in that area. And there again, I don't mean to be kinda vague on it. But each individual project that you make, we're gonna have to sit down and look at each individual project. We're gonna have to throw it all off and see what sticks, see how it fits in with this census area. And then we'll sit down with you and say, I care what they think. First of all, is it an eligible project? That's the first thing we're gonna check out off the bat. Is it eligible or not? As it relates to loss revenue, once again, y'all can put all of your money in loss revenue. For dollars, if you so choose. If you wanna take part of it, once again, there should be four buckets that the money must go. If you're like, no, we wanna put part of it in this other bucket, you're welcome to do that. If all of that, you'll win there. Now, I can tell you that there's nothing in any of those three buckets that you can't do with the money if you put it in loss revenue.
Now, Mark, that's what we need to get that report done to April 30th. We have the commissioners approve that resolution to say we're gonna accept that standard allowance. So we've done that, which really just, like you say, opened it up for them to decide how.
That's kinda what they told us at school this year, was that, that the best route to go was the revenue loss.
Now, a lot of people are under the misconception of, alright, we've, we've all agreed we're gonna put it in loss revenue. That would be whatever we want to with it. There's, there's, there's still gonna be tracking that. They still wanna know where every one of those dollars goes. Now, you put it in the loss revenue bucket, but it's still retained to ARCA identity. We still have to track that money, we have to know where it went, how it was expended. Did it comply with all the legal regulations until it's also been gone? So let, let this just go on the overall federal fund, the mix and mingle, it needs to retain its identity.
That was in separate lines, separate line.
Needs to retain its identity, we got. Now, as far as the allocation of that money, there's a couple of ways we can go about it. Most folks we've worked with say, well, we wanna check into a few things. We don't know for sure whether we wanna do it, till we get more information on it. We do know we wanna do this and this. So let's go ahead and present the commissioner's court, the Rosso authorities taking part of this money. How the loss revenue expended in this case. And then we come back to the sound bank, and this is what you got left.
Dr. Gilroy. So, Senator, so since we're putting in that loss revenue, would it not, this qualified census tract wouldn't necessarily pertain to it? For like buying a piece of equipment in my precinct, when I don't have a whole lot of precincts in this qualified census tract?
It's got a, a portion of my precinct in there.
Alright, so if I'm understanding your question, you're saying if you wanted to purchase a piece of equipment. Is this gonna create an issue?
Uh-huh.
No, because that piece of equipment changes.
Anywhere.
Throughout your precinct.
Yeah.
Even if it didn't include part of this purple area, you still have a precinct that you have to serve.
So, Mark, then the hospital thing, there should, there's some requirements for what they would have to turn in. But it sounds like to me the hospital, for their additional cost of COVID, would meet those requirements. Any additional air, air purifier, air purifiers would meet those. Cybersecurity, would that meet that? And then the lab costs for whoever needs that? And even the fire department please?
Yep.
Okay. And then the railroad.
Building for that shared equipment at the maintenance farm.
I just, I know we're about to have to.
Carpooling, whatever, parks and hundreds, probably.
Where we go, is expensive.
Areas where we might.
Oh, is it? B R, you put on the other side.
You put it on the east side of the maintenance barn there. Go up through there, go up there. No, big gravel after. Go all the way up through there, park those two trailers under.
Anywhere, they were the only ones on the scene. We thought it was a volunteer to show up. Do, well, we heard the alarm, that was how much guys volunteered, guys taking care of. And in order for them to be able to provide that kind of service, they have to have a big, uh, bath that's bigger than just what they can deal with. So that's a fixed dollar amount. We're getting, I believe, a shit probably a lot of their contract there. Those costs are going to go up significantly. Primarily due to the fact that, uh, they're making more calls for volunteers to, uh, volunteer services now. So in a case like that, how would you structure that? We pay it for three years or however long you've got money to spend on it.
It sounds like to me the easiest way to do that would be to purchase the fire truck. We're, we're gonna have to come up here during this time period. I don't think they really want to get it. The payroll reporting is one of the hardest things. That's my, that's been my experience with grants, because I want to look at everything.
So a half million dollar fire truck to spend.
It'll end up being probably four or five hundred thousand the next time.
Yeah, and we, and we know that's something that we have to fund. I don't think we have a hospital. Not fund. And, and I know where y'all are interested in it. I was just.
I'd really take it out, knock that off everything else, yeah.
Well, that helps every person in the county. You know, that, that's what I was.
Well, what it does is it takes burden off your budget. If that's what you intend to do, as opposed to, you know, which in effect means you have to increase your tax rate or allow you to increase your tax rate, or if you go down on the tax rate, you're, you're devoting money from ARPA effectively in place of your own money you should take care of out of your budget.
Right.
And I think we, I, I think we should be careful. How would you, how much of that would you do?
I think, I mean, it's obviously, well, I guess it doesn't have to be one time thing. Y'all decide to spend it all right there, I think. But, but I was just looking at what, what we see coming that is important. And when I listen to Chief McCrady talk about he doesn't have enough help and all those kinds of things. I live in the county, and if they need another truck, I don't want them to be servicing this person because their house caught a fire ten minutes before mine, and they don't have anybody seeing them having another truck or whatever it is. I'm just thinking that from that point.
One replacement, they do that replacement like every six years, five years, maybe. We got, kind of, the big.
I think, I think, they, they buy one, one year and contribute into the cost. We buy one.
They kind of locate them out of, out of service. So there's one in for sure, I think, coming up.
Buy one every.
Six years, maybe, maybe five.
Have we been splitting the cost?
Split it last time.
Three or five last time.
Okay, that's, that's, we're doing, we're properly splitting the cost every five years.
So the railroad district, is that, I mean, I'm not familiar with government doing something like that. I, I don't know, Ron, what you, how that would.
I'm thinking about fifty to a hundred thousand dollar county contribution. That's for instance, Hopkins County has already done, they've given the, uh, or the sixth rural rail district fifty thousand dollars to be used for, uh, improvements of that tract. Because it's bad.
Yes.
Last day today. Um, the railroad district itself just committed over half a million dollars of their, uh, financial balance to doing this. And we're in the process of getting out, you know, kind of replacement, bridge repairs right now. So the, the idea of if you took them up there, or did the board, it's a six counties for sure, might as well, uh, would you, judges, consider contributing part of your ARPA money to tract infrastructure? You know, not enough to pay for the whole thing, but, you know, again, I, I, I would do more than a hundred thousand. I might be happy, real happy with fifty thousand, that's what Hopkins County.
Are y'all going to Hopkins County, too?
No.
So we need to make sure that that, where, now?
That's your answer, I think. I'm not that you could use it, uh, uh, we, we would have done this. Yeah, yeah, as far as it being, we were a little more wary with our, with, and, and there. We're hurting and we want to keep that work so good. Back over to, that's fifty thousand, Hopkins County. Uh, and once again, we, we just have to kind of sit down with, with each project individually. Uh, one county that hired us said we've, we've already got an agreement with the hospital. We give them one, one million. Uh, they had to pay premium to get employees during COVID because everybody was offering. It's an issue in every less of us. It's that we had to buy, then bring in additional employees by town with ARPA getting sick and waiting and, and federal. They, uh, they got a memo, they have an agreement in place. They had stacks of my rolls to substantiate it. They'll, they'll provide whatever documentation they need. If we give them some money, they will provide it, pack it around. But, once again, it, it all goes back, and, and as you've all heard, the devil's in the detail. Uh, you know, they're like, fix the common check, we're gonna get that much out of the way. And so, let us look at your documents first, let us review them all. Uh, all of the expenses had been incurred within the timeframe. Uh, it was for premium pay. Only problem is it already made. Final rule says you cannot reimburse premium pay that's already been paid. I don't know about that in front. So that, that would have been one point four million dollars that the feds had very easily said, can you give that back? Uh. So what do you call that? I mean, this COVID is now turned down. They're not gonna be spending there as much in that premium pay. So how do we accomplish this? Well, it goes back to sitting down with them and saying, okay, what, what did you spend it? That's an eligible expenditure that we can take part in. And there again, it goes back to.
Retention pay, maybe?
General managers would have to have it, especially air brands. Yeah, nice.
We can kind of put what they're asking.
Yeah, they have a ton of stuff, but I don't know if they had pay in there or not, I can't remember.
And I'm not saying you can't do it, you can. That's, that's just like this particular incident. I mean, I, well, we've already talked on the, on the, find a way to do it. So we found a way to do it. But that's just like supplies, uh, P P Es and all COVID supplies and stuff. We can go back and cover that. You know, the hospital was not compensated for those supplies. You know, they couldn't buy that mask for fifty cents a piece and then turn around and charge the patient a dollar part. They can't double that for a couple of years. If they had them sitting out there in the lobby and said, here they are. Make sure to take me one or two. Here's a hand cleaner. Anything else they did that they can document, they were not reimbursed or compensated for, and that's an eligible expenditure. I don't think their CEO has probably thought about it either, the way it's just. Yeah, yeah, and there's, there's definitely a question. If, I'm just saying, it's something we can't just say. We know the hospital is taking in the COVID. But we all feel that that's, that's a justifiable expenditure. We've got to get out of the way. Well, let me throw one in here. It's on the head, roughly past the end of the line. We've got building across the street that we're in favor of, uh, redoing the face of that building. It's old, it's tired, and so we've got an area for a little project on, on downtown there. So we're gonna probably want to spend two hundred thousand dollars to face that front block, face the courthouse. How do you justify it? Maybe just, it's a, you know. Uh, or this, this is a county on building? County on building. All right. So if that's something you would typically spend taxpayer dollar, if it were not, if I missed one. Then you would.
We would, it's, it's deteriorated really bad, too.
We probably have to come in a couple of years because it's, we, we needed the money that we had to avoid the burger tax burden. Uh, and we probably would have done it a couple of years ago if money had been. It's what we have in tow. The only thing that, that you need to be fully aware of is the fact that these are federal dollars. It's gonna have a interest to it, that if we were lucky, well, you would not have. Uh, one of those is the historic commission.
Okay, it's not involved in that.
I've got them involved already. They're, they're the ones that are gonna do the, the, the renderings. Now, next step will be up to us to do, to hire engineers and/or architects to come up with the course of drawings for what the historic commission has laid out and given us two or three options to choose from. Yeah, but we already have that, you have the part of the historic.
So then we would appear those engineers and architects based on the requirements that you have.
Uh, yes. Now, the only kicker in there, federal procurement policy says the host tech architect will take that all. If he has already done the renderings and so forth, he is already involved in the project, I would know you're with it. You know, we don't have that situation. Okay. Historic commission sent up an architect up here. Okay, okay. And all they're willing to do is give us some renderings to look at. If I ask them, will you provide architectural work and where can you draw it? No, we don't have that. We will simply turn in ideas that are on the draw with you, and you will have to. Okay, I'm up with that, yeah. We have not that. Yeah, so. I need to see if they're on it. In that situation, yes, you would have to procure an architect. And let's say it was reversed, and an architect had already been involved. You could not hire that architect. You could not procure that architect because it would be a conflict of interest. He would already have a, have on that guy, wanting the other architect that was interested in proposing. Well, I hope in the next month to have some drawings and shows to make sure what we can do off the main security, and then we'll begin the R F Q process. Uh, the other thing is what's referred to as the planning and the treasury that even said, whether ours, that they're okay with it. I still. You have a point, point on that. It is taking these dollars, basically Robert and Peter take off. Taking these dollars, doing, covering something in your budget with, with, it's significant.
I learned that as the plan versus stuff in school, you're gonna supplement the child's education. First, now we're gonna pay for the regular teacher, which is the planting. So it's just where you take money that you wouldn't spend anyway and use it for that purpose. And so they're allowing it, I'm shocked.
Uh.
And that's in right?
Well, no, we said, we said, that's not part of the fine rules. Uh, and, and we've got, we've got one that says we want to get this, this, and this. Uh, we're not interested in the procurement. Let's take that money, let's take payroll with it for three months, we'll take that money goodbye. I'm not, I'm not saying I agree with that.
I would be, I would be that. Because I'm.
I would, I would.
You know, and not be called back in twenty-seven. But none of us repeat.
Now, let's, now let's go back and talk about that. That's something that you have on record basics, you have it ongoing. Uh, before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, if, if you still have money, I would run it through Commissioners' Court and allocate some of that money far payroll. When this is all said and done, you don't want to give a dollar back. It's back to the feds. So if you get down to it and you've got fifty-eight thousand dollars left, rather than give it back, take payroll with it. We don't want you to spend that dollar.
But that's what I, that's what you said.
That, now you're thinking about it, that's your idea.
But we want.
It don't have to be that resource, it can be our, it's an option, right? It don't have to be that resource to do that, Chris.
No. No, I mean, if, if I'll say right now, we want to cover, we want that five hundred thousand, I'm gonna take that in payroll. That's, that's your call.
So then what? I mean, because, I mean, the fact of the matter is our salaries compared to, I mean, Walmart is paying more than what some of our office people make at offering. And Bill remember offering a sign of those. Bill, just chicken. You know, so, so what, if, if we wanted to do that, I have a concern about paying, you know, a salary for right now or the right now. See, if you put that in place, you're gonna have to pay that, you know, or reduce somebody. Say, well, federal money's up, we're gonna reduce your salary. It would have to be, and I know bonus is not the topic of some kind. So how, how do we go about doing that, or how does that work?
Uh, it, it would basically be a bonus type situation where you could offer a bonus to all kind of employees.
But if it's a lecture edition, then we have to call that in the newspaper, all those advertisements.
All that. Uh, same thing, if you want to go say, well, you know, we weren't able to do it last year, but we usually give a bonus in October of the year. You cannot, you can't reflect that. A county in the state of Texas cannot look back and increase pay that you've already paid to the employee. That's a state staying up for one time, yeah. Don't want to need that all the time.
School, school food all the time, all the time.
But I would think that's what's down in that affair.
Right, well, I mean, you should, you read, you read it. Says you can raise them up to thirteen dollars an hour, spend twenty-five thousand dollars per week. Who was gonna do that? But it is allowed, you know. So we don't actually, I just wanted to explain to y'all who decides.
I think, I think you made it a political, we need to follow it all.
I agree with you.
You're awesome in the public mind. So get past elections, right? Yeah, that, that sounds the same way. It's, you know, everybody, they can, they have a history of not getting raises in this county. We got much employees that are way behind. How do we deal with that? This year, we're gonna be dealing with it, probably change for races that are gonna fix it. Uh, there again, final rule's fixed directly to that. If, if that's something you need to do to retain or regain employees you lost in the payroll, that's an eligible expenditure. Uh, but like you said, once you start down that road.
It's in the budget every year. Then you have to.
Jump off the cliff two years.
Well, if you give the bonus, it's not in the budget every year.
Yeah, but it's like, I made good a couple of years ago, now, now I'm losing money.
But if you're the guy who got a thousand dollars and now he's not, he just brought, so you can't give that from that one year.
Tough one.
Yes. I noticed a lot of counties have already done that. I mean, y'all, I'm sure y'all got a call, people, my kids' names are all a thousand dollars. You know, but how many counties have that issue?
My guys have asked the question, you know, said the sheriff's department got that extra money, and we were out here every day, they were out here, why, why did we not get it? And I just tried to, you know, ease it over the best I could.
We paid passengers, we paid coronavirus. We had all those requirements, and we had, how many times have I had to come back to court and change the policy? Because here's what they said the policy was, and then that wasn't acceptable. Thirty dollars a day. Or, you know, not really that awful. But they were, you know, they had those requirements. Our employees didn't need those, as did no one else in the county. So, but I, but at the end of the day, it was easier for the people who worked in jail who got that later by me.
Yeah.
But I'm sure.
And that's, that's what my guys have said numerous times, you know, why, why did, why did we not get extra? Because we were out here every day, you know, facing all the same, well, maybe not all of the same. But facing some of the, some of the stuff that they had to face, too.
Uh, and they're, and I'm not trying to make justification for it, but with those funds, that was one of the things, that they were in direct contact with.
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially, you know, carriers of COVID, they didn't have an optional job or a flyer or a mandate. But if, if they do that, then, then that specifically stated those funds could be utilized for that purpose.
Which frankly, after all the work that it took to get that done, is how I knew that we were gonna need a grant. Because that's seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars or something, and now we're looking at six point three million. You know, nearly ten times greater, or no, hundred times greater. Wait, wait, so that's, you know.
It's, uh, it's one of those things you, you definitely want to consider your, your citizens throughout the county. You want to consider the needs. You want to consider the hardships that were faced, both by your citizens and businesses throughout the area. But at the same time, um, you've got to be on guard with these funds, which once again, it sounds like a lot of money. But anything that tells somebody their money here, they're, they're gonna be handed up. If you want to assist nonprofits, then I would recommend that you establish a cap as far as the amount of money that you're willing to do that. Establish criteria and then wire that they submit applications and then make a decision, once again, reestablish criteria of which one of these was a fund. What county we're working with, we're going to sit down with them Thursday, and once again, the little sheet I'm talking about, I've got it all on, and I just blacked it out in the morning. Uh, they've got 48 under requests. Part of those were submitted by the county judge, part by commissioners, part by various departments within the county. Some of them were submitted by private citizens, some of them were submitted by businesses throughout the county. And we're going to sit down and we're going to start our own discussion. They've got roughly five times the dollar amount of requests that they have under.
So do you recommend that we do something like that? That we take those forms and click that form and, I hate to say, put it on our website, but, but what do you, what do you suggest? I mean, I don't know.
This, this is one of those type deals, you got to, you got to walk the packet with it. You can't take these mon, funds, you can't even spend them without like in front of the board. That's why we request that anything you do with these funds that a government commissioner's court and commissioners' court agrees with the expenditure of those dollars is where we're going. If you're going to put any of it out there to be expended for any purpose other than the county itself, once again, I recommend you let us know what you want to spend it on, that we establish a cap for, we establish, say, we establish the criteria that would be used, and then say, okay, I'm going to put this out there that this is what we consider doing with these funds. Once again, I'm just throwing examples out here in Chalk. The, the one county we're working with that put generators, smaller water supplies at the priority within the county, we're getting the whole program stood up, from the back, know exactly how we're going to process those applications, what we're going to do with it. Now, we know how many potential applicants there are, we pull them all off the T C P website, they'll have to be registered, we know which ones are publicly owned, we know which ones are privately owned, we know which ones are water supply questions. So we know how many potential applicants there are, so the county has a general idea of what they're going to put in that particular, farthest application. In their particular situation, they don't want to just give the money out to them, they want them to have some, some skin in the game. So they're requiring that they put up at least a 20% match. They want generators, then they're going to pay for this 20% of it. In order to cut down on some of the paperwork, all the confusion, the county is procuring the engineer and we'll have the engineer today procuring, like, bar, design the generators for anybody that has selected or the generator wants to.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Trisad has got generators as one of their substations.
He asked for a drawback before this all comes about, about what, I said, I don't know about it, but now it come here. Didn't know anything about that, did he? I reckon. What was he answering about for county? If somebody, if he had the, the generators, like he heard in other counties, they were generating or backing us and so.
I thought they had, I thought they had backed up their one of their, I thought they'd already done their.
I would make out, I would make that. So being that, the way to do reverse, the shape we got, I don't know.
That plant by my shop didn't have a generator.
It doesn't have one. The one out here above, my house out here is above.
Did we have a significant amount of people without water?
In the freest.
For three to four nights?
See, they.
And that starts with the city though, so they get the water out of the water tire to get it out of the county. So that's one of the. Yeah, that was a lot of it, something froze out here with the city water deal and, and that's what started all that.
I don't know what that water means, I don't know, I thought they were pretty stable financially.
Most of, yeah, the most of the, like, they have a mess, they need gas and flash, like, I mean, low water pressure, I mean, anyway, like, I can tell they're all.
Something, something going on.
Uh, see, it's my, right, the order, over there.
Do we have other water? I don't know. We come, that's one of the only counties.
That's the only one we've got.
So that's nothing we want to reach out there just to make sure. It's not like we would be having to deal with 48.
Yeah, that's, that's only one. There again, that goes back to the county and what I was going to say is, in, in providing funds like that, there again, you have to be careful, you don't really even give your parents a showing favoritism on, especially when you're dealing with individuals or you're dealing with private businesses. You don't want to be showing favoritism all over another, you want to be out in the open, but we're doing it all, make sure everybody has the same opportunity. And that's basically what the federal way to stay in the case of procurement is, you've got to put this out there, these tax dollars, you got to make everybody sure that they have the same opportunity for coastal tax dollars.
But only hit the nonprofit water supply?
The shop supply. And I would see what you could do, draw ours for, not their ones, anyway.
That may be, yeah, that's what I was just thinking. Since they're tied together, I feel like that they might, you know, that's just my thinking.
I can also see how the city can say, they dropped the money like this and the county stopped the money like that, so they're going to burn the things within the city limits and maybe they got water, but they didn't. I don't know.
Well, I think, you know.
Well, that's what I've been thinking, so maybe we consider, maybe we give the city a say, you know, while they make a say.
Maybe the E D C, I wouldn't, I mean, Nathan may have some ideas or something that we might need to support, I'm not sure.
Well, you know, if you got that money, you can edit towards that project. I, I see.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
What precincts were there? There, you know.
Two, two, two mountains. As, as far as the actual budget, are y'all running at a loss compared to what you were looking at years back?
I should have said, we should have said.
And, and that's not a, that's not a. And, and there again, you know, there's so many things that have changed, you know, prior to.
Prior to the COVID and these video conferences and stuff, I don't know that I even know a video conference, you know, now commonplace.
But that, and, and people working from home, physicians, these two, they never thought about how they are working from home, so their core, their vibe, a lot of that's what's in a.
Center box.
Yeah.
I've got a son that, that's working from home and their main office right now is in Phoenix, Arizona. They told him there was no sense in him, you know, he has to go out there quite a bit.
Yeah.
But he said, they, they told him, they said, just, you know.
Yeah, but if he's at home 80% of the time, then he's going to be live by the local 80% of the time, he'd be eating at the restaurants and all that in Arizona. I hope I threw some, some ideas out there for y'all. I hope I didn't confuse anybody. And I hope you weren't expecting me to, you're telling you that you got spending on this and this and that's it. But, uh, the good thing about it is, is they're putting it in Los Angeles that, that is the most liquid place you can put it and you have the most ability to, to utilize these funds that can be put in there. And it's, it's one of those type deals that, it shocked us and I think everybody else when they came out with the proposal and just said, 10 million bucks, you don't have to justify. And we were, we were doing this formula, the night had been mine, he got in there, you know, it was, you know, to this power for this year and the next year you can do something else.
I think one year later you decided.
Then, that's something we sit down with, with a pencil, piece of paper, but, uh, I just think about this, when we got to it, he's thinking more about it, because I, I see there's going to be so much land abused in this thing. The east coast and the west coast, I see a government that's, okay, when they're not going to turn back there, they try to.
No, if you look at the, you know, first allocation question population, you know, you look at each big town, the large counties, the hundreds of them that was on.
And, uh. We're not considering, you mean, you're trying to, I just feel like the term administration, you know, uh.
You know, right, I agree with you, but who knows what the administration, who's going to be in administration in 2017?
I would say that's our call, because we're not going to stray out.
Right, right, we're not going to, y'all aren't, I'm not going to sign.
That's, that's the main thing, if, if you should be audit it, you just need to make sure your ducks are alive and administrative. We're, we're going to, if we need to make you, you know, we're not. And you control what you do after you're on going, if you're not like this, would you want to jeopardize future administration there? It's, it's just not working. What, uh, this is not an action item, but what do you think of things that we talked to you, talked with you in this week yesterday, what do we need to do to drop that toll and get our major water rights changed, something to do with hospital?
Well, somebody's got to get with Terry and explain to him.
Somebody had to know his name, yeah.
You know.
What qualifies?
I think the hospital is obviously a legitimate, I mean, that's not even a question to me. I don't know if y'all.
Thanks, Sam.
Now, there again, is, is the one hospital in town? There are two or five.
I mean, I don't know if anyone else is interested in one of those in their office. We, you know, does it work or does it not work? One person, your mom and Scott Cogan, none of the rest of us got it. We're sitting close together. How many of us are amazing or not likely to begin with? So you know, that's almost, I mean, you know, so, I, I don't, I don't know.
You know, if we can justify this front place shift of the annexing, drawing from the historical commission here in the next couple of months, I'd like to keep going with that and put them there. The water pump, go through the R and B process, we want to, we want to do that process, whether we have.
What about these, uh, fire trucks? Fire trucks, that, that engine, if we need to.
I don't think we'll do that.
Okay. Two years ago, yeah. I didn't know we could plan for it now. We spent, yeah, we had to spend it in 2025. If we had to buy one in 25, then we can set aside now and allocate it and.
Well, we have to order.
Take the two years to get it.
Right.
Yeah, it, it leads that to get.
That's a beat ticket item, maybe piece of equipment or something.
I like seeing a lump sum over in each one of our budgets for road funding.
You and me, but it's just what I figured to say.
I like to bring on some side.
I've got seen a lump sum in each precinct budget for road funding, so.
I've got several big, big, big corners that I'm fixing to have to replace and getting at the point and.
Everything going up.
Well, yeah, the last one that I just done, it was nearly $24,000 for what it cost me and I didn't have that much budget, so.
And our contracts seem to go up with, uh, the old sand and, uh.
Old sand, old gun, gravel.
I want to warn you, keep in mind, this is money that we can use now to, to shore up your budget, that's just what you were talking about.
It'd be gone someday.
When the money's gone.
Jump off the cliff, buy a piece of equipment, last year, 20 years.
That's right. Maybe if, I mean, it's up to y'all to make those decisions, but just what I talked about, this year you have money to buy materials and two years later you got.
We put some roads fixed, but I mean, we're spoiled for a while.
Well, I mean, if you get, if you get the roads fixed like they need to be fixed now with, with some of this.
They'll last.
You're looking at 10, 15, 20 years down the road before you really have to do anything else, mate.
How much would it take to get all our roads where they need to be? More than this.
Oh.
That's my fault.
Hundred and fifty million dollars.
We're never going to get them fixed.
That six million is not even a drop in the budget.
Just agree on that amount, like Jeff said, just agree on it, fix the amount.
You know, and, and I'm just throwing this out, 250,000 in each, each precinct.
This is, you know, I'm scared of this, but I know it's good.
We got miles to go.
I'm scared death it is. And, and, you know, now then, we ride the roads every day and I've told the guys, I said, guys, don't do any excess driving that you don't have to do. I said, just, you know, do what we've got to do. And I said, that, that's, you know, we're just going to have to conserve the best we can because this budget to fix and start dwindling and, and next year's going to be even worse than three, so.
Yeah, I, I like to say raises for the whole county, you some of that as well in the future, so. I know next year sheriff's department's going to have to.
Well, that'd be something that we'll commit to now, not in this.
Well, yeah, I know, I mean, it's just hard.
What kind of races do y'all think there's something I can do?
Well, I mean, when we're looking at, our road hands looking at $21 and they can go to prefects and, and go to work for 24, they've got a great big banner out there right now that's 24.50 an hour. I, it scares me. I mean, my guys are older, they're, they're probably.
We're way behind on that.
I believe the big one, my officer way behind too, and I know when I look at, you know, the different clerical offices, stuff around, I mean, you can make that money McDonald's would not be responsible for any reporting to you. Very different. Okay, so since I was about to be at all those road materials, um, I will send you what I have, if commissioners, I'm assuming that we're going to remit everything, we could extend the original ones to one year, but I don't imagine they're going to want to.
They're not going to move into.
How could they?
Yeah.
And I'm not going to bid that, each takes its asphalt, I'm not going to bid them again, they're too far away now. And their products went way up.
Well, we, we can't keep them from being.
Lufkin. There's Lufkin, yeah.
So let's do, use Lufkin, there's no way.
Yeah. I mean, we, we, they have the opportunity to bid, but because of the.
Oh, that's true, I guess so, but it's going to be crazy.
We, we.
We also really get, we don't have to get a tank, because we're paying $900 a day, etc.
Well, that's true. Well, and, and that's something, guys, that we, we need to, to talk about is this money that we put in the budget for another truck. We need to, and I've been looking, and I'm going to stop one of these days if I'm ever out there when they're out that away, when they're open, just outside of Greenville, there's a big truck shop out there and I saw a truck sitting out there Sunday at night when I come, come from my son and it's a good looking truck from the road.
Get together, two of them, look at it.
Yep, yep, we do, we sure do.
That money we put aside?
Money's put aside, it's ready to do, and we need to look at.
That 75,000, the truck and the trailer, not going to happen.
So where's the rest?
The truck's going to cost that probably.
Yeah.
But, but we can live with the, with the trailer.
Now, we can buy out this artwork money.
Uh.
It may as well last.
You know, if, if nothing else, take some of this and, and buy another, another good truck and trailer and then look at, at getting rid of the old one with what money we've got outdated now. I mean, that would be something that, that I, I'd be more willing to do.
I guarantee you that our rates just to go up on that setting inside around 900.
Oh, it's going to have to.
Oh, it, it already has, Jeff done checked them. It's already gone up, so. It's already gone up, so if we have to pull a, you know.
You go to these places, they sell old, they're not going to buy them, they don't use first.
How much is a tanker house?
It's just a trailer.
Okay, I mean, I don't know.
Nowadays, probably thirty for a used one to fifty.
Thirty to fifty for a used truck?
Yeah, a decent one.
Yeah, a decent one.
It's got a whole wide ass.
Grab the can, has ones now.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Because, you know, we could have planned, put down payment for the last two years on this.
Oh, yeah.
Nine hundred dollars.
I mean, they're, they're, they're out there that you can leave, but I, I don't see any reason we shouldn't take this, some of this and buy one, and just be done with it then. Another thing that, that John mentioned a while ago is the shed out there to park this equipment under. The east side of the maintenance barn, it would be a, we could build a, probably a hundred-foot shed right there.
Side of the corner. Side of the gate there, or this?
No, back, back towards the woods there, the east side of.
Where all those tires are and stuff?
Where the tires, everything are.
Where our truck is, all right through there.
We could get all the big trucks, the dump truck trailers, the, the belly dump and all of that under that, and that's something that's, to keep this, this stuff out of the weather. I, I've got all I can, I can handle out at, out at my end, and.
Mark, can we build a shed with this money to go over these things?
Well, let's see, it'd be a lot better to get it under, under shed, keep it under weather.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, you don't get, bring, bring us out here, you know, you need to get under the shed.
Yep.
The stuff we do use, you know, we do park it in the shed every body.
It's worth it just for one hailstorm.
Right. Mark, what do you need from us today? Between sign and.
I think that's it for that.
And, and Mark, the sooner, I guess, that we can get you some of these ideas for you to start checking on, the better off we'd be.
Definitely. With that being said, we can go ahead and set a date for another workshop if you want to, or y'all can start giving me this information, and then I can get back with y'all, how, how y'all want to do it. But I would encourage you, these items, as you have, you're throwing them out, discussing them, I would encourage us to have another workshop, get out in the weeds with it, rather than we just present that to y'all, commissioners for.
Yeah, yeah, I'd, I'd rather do that, get, sit down and hit the table and go over some of this stuff that, you know, some of these ideas we've got, and let you give us feedback on it, and.
So if you get somebody involved, going to like the shed for our trucks, and they give us a bid on it, will that throw them out of the running to get, to get that project? Since we already know what it's going to cost, and we use a contractor to bid it, should we just guesstimate it?
Yeah.
Say we need five hundred thousand instead of bidding something for four hundred and sixty thousand?
Yeah. I'd say that way the best you can.
We won't throw them out like on that building remodel stuff, like Preforts, they give us what for on that building? Might not can use them for engineering when we redo that.
That was before we had the drawings, because y'all are going to follow.
Oh, we just had an assessment, you know, of the building, I don't know if that takes them out of the running. Yeah, it's a totally different project.
Yeah, totally different.
Crazy lift.
So do you think that we should all get one of those forms and just give those out and bring us back to our next name? Would that be helpful to you, or just?
No, let me, let me get them to go off, and then if you would, scan them in an email.
I was just thinking, say, him have them and look over them, or he'll have the information we need when he comes back.
And, and once again, the first thing I do is, when I look at a request like that, I go back and say, I'm going to say this is ineligible, then let me figure out where it says it is eligible.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to get Tim in on this.
You need to do that before you come back and sit down with the vehicles. Yeah.
And then I'll come back.
Definitely have a center budget.
He's still got four, he's not inviting you.
Yeah.
Huh?
He's still got Paul Carter, but he may.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think that you.
We need to share equipment yesterday in that building, and then what we did, get our set amount, all of like two fifty, and then, yeah. We turn all that in, start adding, and it would be, go a little higher.
Hey, I just told him that figure out.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I was saying, oh, I mean.
Well, I look at you buying equipment, it's a small investment.
Yeah, yeah, equipment is, is always an investment.
You might just go back, you have a certain chance to make sure.
Just to survive a whole year.
I think we're doing stuff.
That's one reason that I have decided not to do any seal coating. And, and want to let it set long enough that when I do seal coat it's there. It's set up and it's ready, because from what I've been told.
I got to do some wood, I think, so. Scavenging, because they just something.
These, these.
Some of these roads are going to take.
It would be good if two of us chipped it one year and two the next. I mean, I could drop out, chip in and get all of them ready for next year, it's like you're.
That's what I'm doing.
And then y'all chip seal.
And I know you've got some ready. We can knock y'all's out pretty quick, then that'd give us the rest of the summer to, to work.
Yeah, because, I mean, it does cut into everybody's work time when you chip seal it all for. It's getting more done, y'all want to do that? When my people ask me, say, hey, how come we're not going to chip seal this year? I say, because we, we've got a whole new game plan here.
And I'll throw this.
Because it's going to be done next year.
I'll throw this at y'all too. I told Jeff that we would try to work on the, somewhere around the fifteenth of June to get that road done up here.
Mm-hmm, be a good time to start.
Yeah, it's ready to roll.
And you, y'all definitely got some toy that needs to be covered.
Well, I don't have any toy.
Okay.
I got all the dishes playing, I'm putting, putting cubs in. We need, we got one more road.
Everything I got, I can finish scavenging stuff, and they're going to be happy, happy. I could get it done a lot better, do it to chip seal next year.
And like I said, why do you have to waste six or seven months?
That's, that's what they've always told me.
It needs to. I did a section last year.
Seal coat over the scam. When it starts turning gray.
Okay, right here. Y'all check your calendars, make sure you're all here on the ninth, tenth, and fifteenth of June to begin our budget conversation with Mark.
You know, you're.
Yeah, I'm good.
Ninth and tenth of June?
That's the song.
I don't, I don't have anything. Is that what it is? So did.
Good.
Uh.
Let's say that's.
Yeah, I should.
I appreciate that.
I know, I know.
So, do we need to include other elected officials, block the sheriff, the district judge, the district attorney, we need to allow them an opportunity to see if their offices, I mean, certainly, but they might want an area identifier, which I don't know.
I talked to Tim yesterday, he's going to add forty beds in his basement down there so he can get some more inmates in there, so he's talking about a remodel down there, so he might be interested in some of that.
Remodeling the jail, do you understand?
Well, it's a basement area down there.
Basement, it's unfinished rooms down in the basement and all down there, they've been using it for storage and whatnot, but he said if he had that, had beds down there and all, that he could bring more money in from the out-of-county prisoners.
Quite a bit, very expensive.
Quite a.
Yeah, that's.
They're forward.
So that's not something that's.
But it is.
The word hits the dirt floor.
So that's not something we would use this money for?
Some of it's concrete, I thought it was concrete, yeah.
It's an expected, we would normally probably do.
It would be something that we could possibly look yet for this, from, from what I, it might fall under that jail expansion, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that for out, for out-of-county prisoners.
Yeah, we'd have to, have to dig into that.
He said he gets forty-five dollars to pay him.
He just bring a lot of money in.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he is definitely bringing it. I mean, this deal that we just done yesterday is.
On those same lines, as far as safe distancing, what's, what's the new one that's out there now?
My guy.
Chick, not chick, not chickenpox.
Not.
Montipox, yeah.
But, but monkeypox.
Multipox.
If y'all need any type of remodel, petitions, anything to make, like for San Terry, for the courthouse, and.
Monkeypox.
Not, not the monkeypox.
That's a big deal, right?
See, my hair and that, and Russell's uniform. Have a monkeypox.
That looks like, that might be some painful stuff too, from the pictures I seen this morning.
So what you said now, I was already, we, we.
Well, I think about the safety of that, because we've got the one courthouse, that actually, the thing we do is model anyway, but, but we're going to use that for a training center when we, when we have people, they're right on top of each other, you know, and we're going to have it big enough where they bring people in for jury duty, they bring them straight out, use it for training center, and several things. But they're fortunate in a sense that the annex, they, they came across a good bill and building, and it's, it's just a vacant room. But they're going to be able to take some of these stuff, and have them all.
We are paying the city to use the city center, where we can call a jury, because we don't have any questions.
I'd like to pave the county extension office parking lot with cold mix, or hot mix, cold mix, like we do it ourselves. It's just wrap, parking lot area.
And then use that to call the jury?
No, 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 just for the county extension office, the whole facility.
No, it wouldn't be much bigger than what they got over here to call the jury.
Yeah, it's not making.
What they bring in.
Maybe they're only charging us six, is it six hundred dollars a day, or something like that? It's not, it's not law, I mean, it's more than what we want to pay, but it's not law to run it.
Well, I'm sure y'all get to thinking it over, and y'all come up with other ideas as well. As far as these forms themselves, do you want me to?
Same.
And then you can send us the request form, is that what we're talking about? Okay.
You'll send them, I guess you can email Barbara and she can send them to us?
Yeah, I'll send them to you. And there again, it's just a little one-page form, just to get some basic information. Fill it out as best you can, just so when I sit down and look at it, I don't understand what it is that you're, that you're requesting, as far as the dollar amount, just get some of it, and then we'll go and look at it once again, and see if that's an eligible activity. As far as the chairman, what, what has to be done, what will be involved in it, the steps and so forth, and so when we sit back down with y'all, we can tell you all the hoops and moves that we got to.
Mark, there's one of my cards, if you get, if you give mine back and you need some more information or something. The, the five-seven-two number is no longer in existence, but the other one's my cell phone, and I've got it with me all the time.
Uh, my card, I think I gave everybody one, I have my cell number on it as well. If I'm not in office, you can reach me on that cell phone. If, if you leave a message and you haven't heard back from me in an hour or two, something happened, call back, because I try to return all calls as quickly as I can.
So do y'all, when these forms go to other elected officials?
Tim? Okay, we'll just wait. I wouldn't say right now.
It would add a little.
Add the basics first, the basic stuff, you need basically.
I like that, there. And it's, it's, the best I can describe it, it's kind of like a funnel, you know, we're going to start off big at the top, and then we'll start taking all of these, I'll put the dollar amounts down, and say, here's your budget. If you did all of these, this is what your budget looked like. And y'all might say, well, let's throw this one, this one, and this one out, and let's get it off the table with the unit, let's get some more information. Some projects, at some point in times, once again, it all goes back to the dollars. Some commissioners are like, well, I'd be in favor of it if they cost so much, you know, it's all dependent on, on the cost. And that goes back to some remodel projects and stuff, in which case what we'll do is, is we'll procure an architecture engineer, then we procure our initial design budget, and then it's approved for a final design project. So they can come in for a minimal price, give you a pretty good ballpark idea of this is what the project is going to cost if you go forward with it.
Mark, when you see those, please send them to my email address, auditor@the safe.
Sure.
And I will send you, okay, guys, on, on road materials, we don't need to add anything else to that, is there any other materials that we got, or if we need to do?
Other than the ones we've got right now, I wouldn't think so.
I think it's complete.
I think it's complete.
It's pretty out to date.
As far as road, road materials, no. Because we added, we added the limestone rock and.
We added some things last year.
Some things last year, so I think, I think we're pretty well complete now with what we need and use.
So our last, our last year vehicle expired in August. Our previous year vehicle that we extended, report on that expired July first, so we're going to be getting pretty good on this.
We're all waiting for the law makings again, everything, or that?
Yes, we're going to do law makings.
But when is that coming?
We're going to do it right away. I mean. Yes, I think it's.
When they need to get.
I, I saw him in the hall today and told him that, when we, we do that, we will, we will send him a packet personally, because he's our current leader. Yeah. Is that what you're saying?
Suppose they, would they, somebody wants to bid when they?
Oh, I don't have it, I haven't figured out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll play that.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll send you, I'll just like I'll.
Call, yeah. Well, see, they're supposed to get my name in tomorrow.
Good.
I'll be able to get emails in the office.
Yeah.
Did you get them?
Speaking of emails, as far as emails, do they, do they all need to come through you, Judge, or Barbara, or individually?
I'm not bad to copy both of us. Barbara and us, may some important may email us.
Yeah, you can go, go to them. My email's on there, but it, you know, if, to go through them would probably be better, and then they can. And, and I'll tell you all this, I don't have mine on my personal phone, my, my county email. And if, it's a day or two, y'all send something, I mean, Brian's got my other one too, he's, he sends a lot of my, the stuff to my personal email that I had before I got the county.
You change that, or is that what you prefer?
You could do it either way, that really, that one really don't bother me. But mine, mine, if I don't get back with you pretty quick, you might, you know, shoot me a text or something other than tell me that you email me or whatever. I, I've got that laptop and, and I, I usually about three, four times a week is about the only time I carry it in, because I keep, I won't leave it at the office, because it's just that poor building, and it'd be very easily for somebody to get in there and get it, so I keep it with me at all times.
Well, and y'all are going to have questions as we go forward with this and all, without a doubt, and like I say, some folks that we work with, they say send off emails through a, a simple person, that way if it's, if it's something that additional individuals need to be aware of, or say, hey, this question's already going up, they can share it, just they kind of know what's going on, what's being asked and answers that are being provided.
That's definitely Barbara, that's not bad, I think, so.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't want emails, I want everybody to respond back.
All right. All right, what else?
Really sick.
Are you gonna get back with us on whatever you think to tell the hospital, if they're gonna?
I think I'm gonna email Karen, call Barbara, just say, if they've carried, uh, we're, we're ready to, uh, give you this money, I think. We'll have to approve that, of course, uh, please, tell Mark what you're thinking about after this money, of course, of. Mark, we saw that, and, and asking for a, uh, patient, we can get together, we'll see if he'll do that, I think it's good to be one of the first ones who opened it one. And I'll get that request in from the staff.
Sounds good?
All right, thank you.
I'll just get it back for another week.
Okay, yeah.
We're off on the twentieth. It's holiday on the twentieth.
What?
Juneteenth. Yeah, so what about the thirteenth, since we have the commissioner's court that day?
Yeah, commissioner's court.
Thirteen.
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 Thirteenth and twenty-seven.
Yeah, thirteenth or twenty-seventh would be good.
Twenty-five, we, we, about five hundred, eight, twenty-three, or, 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 there. Martinville here, probably like there from nineteen to twenty-fifth, I think. So the, the twenty-third, twenty-fifth? Right. For the first, for the. The thirteen, nine, we made it on that day. First and third.
That's good for me.
On the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's working real good. That bit, I just blew right in my face. That's, that's what they always say, keep it good and cool, they want nobody to go to sleep.
I was gonna interrupt this.
Well, I don't believe it, maybe it's gonna, from the start.
I make a motion, tell them. Second.
Okay, I told y'all I would call if we took any action, and that's why I was, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No action taken, and all the flavor of care, they are.